In the meeting, it's six thirty-one. Ordinance committee meeting. Today's date is Tuesday, January twenty-third. The time is six thirty-two P.M. With me, I have Counselor Meg McGrath, Counselor David Bartley online. I have Counselor Linda Vagan and myself as the committee members. And with us, we also have Counselor Carmen Ocasio within the chambers too as well. But according to Jeffrey, our administrative assistant, the planning board won't be able to join us till about seven. So I guess we could go ahead and take up the other items first, just to get them out of the way. So I would entertain a motion and take up item four, I guess.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, can we just, you know, in this light of getting this stuff done, why don't we take, suspend the rules? I'll make a motion to suspend the rules, take six, seven, and eight up as a package. And because that way they're just all handicap stuff, right?
I hear a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in. I don't think I have to do a roll call, or I do, because...
Well, I, there's that rule, I'm not really sure what the, there's verbiage for that.
Yeah, I think it's hybrid. Jeff, could you help us with the form so that way we won't have to every time do the roll call? Or do we have to do that because it's a smaller committee?
I'll be right up.
All right, thank you. In the meantime, I guess, well, I guess I can't go until we do the... We would've been done. Just for roll call, Meg McGrath Smith?
Here.
Well, I mean, yes, yes or no?
Yes.
What's our...
For the, to open what you said.
Oh, sure, yes.
Counselor David Bartley, yes. Counselor Vagan?
Yes.
And Counselor Is Rivera, yes. So the items that are put forth are, well, the first one was item six, filed by Counselor Anderson Burgos, had a handicap sign be placed on, in front of thirty-eight Beacon Ave for Elijah Santos. The other, item seven, was filed by Counselor Givner, that a handicap sign be removed from one ninety-five Beet Street for Wolfen Peruello. And that, item eight, was filed by the former Counselor of Ward Two, that the handicap parking at five twenty-seven South Bridge Street, please be removed. The original applicant has moved and will be applying for the new location. Counselor Bartley, sounds like...
No, I just wanted, do you have some, do you have a report from the Handicap Commission on number six?
I actually do not have a report for any of this stuff.
Okay, then I'll make a motion to table number six until we get the report.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. And I'll make a motion to, I'll make a motion to approve numbers seven and eight because they're for removal, so that, that's, that shouldn't, that's not an issue.
All in favor?
Aye. Okay, so, all right, and then, so six, seven, and eight are done. Which one do you want to go to now?
Four.
Four.
Okay, I'll make a motion to take item four off the table.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, so we just, okay, I'll make a motion to remove item six from the table.
Second.
Second.
Jeff?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, so just in light of what, what our administrative assistant just advised us, that the Handicap Commission Chair approved placing a placard at, in front of thirty-eight Beacon, and we will get, get a report at some point, so I'll...
Yeah, Don Welch from disability, he's reached out to me and let me know that he had reviewed the application and they approved it.
Great, so based on that, and assuming we'll, you'll get the report to the chairman? Okay, based upon that, I'll make a motion to a, to approve the signage.
So a motion to approve the signage?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, got those done. And I'll renew my motion and take, do you have to read that stuff?
Yes, I was about to do that right now. Just typed in the notes real quick, when I report out. So...
I'll, I'll try to help you with the notes too, but...
So, the, the motion, on the motion is, someone will have to make the motion, but the words are, "Motion to take a roll call vote that for the purposes of this meeting would be applicable to all motions to remove an item from the table, place items on the table, package items, or suspend the rules unless there is an objection."
Second.
Yeah, okay, I'll second, okay, and then...
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, so we did it.
So, item four, did you motion for item four already? Did I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item four was filed by Counselor McGee, ordered that the zoding ordinance sections six point four point two exemptions be amended to add a letter K. Banners or signs associated with a civic or municipal program may be allowed in all districts. Community or commercial sponsorship may be displayed on said banner or sign, provided that the banner or sign itself is not be greater than six square feet. These installations must be approved by the city and by the Department of Public Works as applicable. We've had already two public hearings. It was closed on November twenty-eighth, was December, December, tableed December twelfth, and I believe, because we were looking to see if there was any corrections on the language, and if anything...
Can I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
Did we ever get a, a letter back from legal defining the boundaries of what we mean by civic or municipal program? I know that that was one of the last questions that was asked, and that's why it was tabled.
I believe that's what it was too. I have not yet received any communication with regards to that. Jeff, have you heard Counselor Vagan? I see your hand is raised. I would like to entertain Counselor Vagan.
Thank you. I was simply going to say the same thing, that we need the definitions relative to the ordinance, and there was also the need for clarification relative to who would be authorizing them. The other concern that had been raised is that this is a portion of the ordinance being added under exemptions. Those are usually a very narrow and specific thing that is being exempted, and this legal form is drawing a very broad exception, or exemption, if you will. And during one of the public hearings, Erin, from our, our head of planning department, had said it was for a specific program that hadn't started yet. So I just think we're a little over our skis on this, making this so broad, and we do need the rest of the information from legal. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Vagan. Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, I'm, I'm glad to be back in this committee. It's been, I served on it for a number of years, so, but I have, I have looked all this over. I'm of the opinion that when you start playing around with this kind of language, so, I was looking at today, just for example, to, just to the chair, I would say, are these signs here forever? Are they permanent signs? Are they, I mean, there's, are they signs that are going to be, do we specify the materials for them? What if this, what if we ask to have the signs removed and they're not removed? Do they have to be permitted? I'm, I'm trying to, and I'm trying to understand, I just heard with the, what the Ward Five Counselor said, it looks like we're, we're trying to find, find an answer for a problem that, that doesn't exist. And so, I'm of the opinion, I won't make the motion, but I'm of the opinion that we send this back to city council with just, just no recommendation, and let the council figure it out, and maybe the law department can get back to us in any time, but I would be hard pressed to see this passing muster of city council, never mind constitutional muster. And I think by leaving it in committee, what are you doing? You're, you're backing up the committee jacket, just, this committee's world famous for doing that. The jacket just grows and grows and grows and grows. I would say, get this back out, get it back to whoever is advocating for it, come back with a real plan and a real proposal, and then, then we'll entertain it then. But, but that's me. I'll, I'll let the chair make a decision on that. You're the ones that got to deal with the jacket, but...
Thank you, Counselor Bartley. No, but I, I really appreciate the input. I, and then, for me, I, I kind of want to hear from the people that want, from the OPED department, to see what it is that they're trying, what is the goal at the end of the day? And if they had, if they were here, or when, they can come in to kind of, and I see Attorney Bissonette there, so are you able to speak on the matter a little more?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, good evening.
Thank you, it was a pleasure.
All the counselors, good evening.
Hi, Mike.
I spoke with Jay Mantuleski today, who's working on the redraft. She had taken the time to go back, after she came back from vacation, and reviewed the tape, to make sure she captured the essence of what everyone was concerned about in the, in the banner draft. My understanding is that that was generated out of the new Tourism Advisory Committee, has something to do with some concerns about how to promote the city and some of the non-governmental NGA programs, or nonprofit programs. So, I agree with your sentiment, that's probably best to let them work that out and, and get something back to you that might be more suitable for your consideration. So, I have no problem with the, with Counselor Bartley's motion to send it back to the council.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was just gonna name that the, the ordinance language that's currently drafted names a number of sponsors who would have to approve it, depending on where it's being placed, because it's specific to banners or signs on parcels participating in a civic or, or municipal program on properties owned by the City of Holyoke or the Holyoke Redevelopment Authority. It does say that it needs to be approved by the department as applicable, so the sponsoring city department of said banner or sign, the building department for all banners or signs, parks and rec, if it's, you know, you know, displayed on parkland or rec area, and then the DPW if, you know, said banner is displayed within the public way or on a utility pole. Starting to get there in terms of its specificity, but it would be, it would be nice to have more.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Counselor Jenny Rivera and Counselor Cocan Givner, who are both with us online as well. So for me, what, what I'm hearing is, is that we don't want to kind of table it, because it's been tabled for some time already, but we don't want to proceed with giving it a positive recommendation to the council, because there are some things that still need to be hashed out. So I would, I don't mind entertaining the, the motion that you actually recommended, Counselor Bartley, if you'd like.
So I'll just, my motion is to return this to the city council without a recommendation.
Do I hear a second? I don't hear a second. I'll second it.
There you go.
All in favor?
Just under discussion briefly, I don't know why there's no second, but I appreciate you seconding, because we just had to talk about it, and we just heard from the law department saying they agree with this.
Under discussion, yeah.
So I, I, I'm not, I'm not getting the silence, but, but there's, maybe there's a rationale, but that rationale's got to be expressed. You, you've got to, you've got to, you've got to articulate your rationale for, for, for this. So, so I think what we articulated, at least you and I did, is that this is not even close to being needed, never mind not even close to being ready. Mike Bissonette just agreed with what I said, send it back to the city council, we will deny the city council, would be my suspicion, and that we will return it to the law department and to OPED to work on it, and hear back from the Tourism Advisory Committee with something more specific and substantive. And that's all, that's all we're doing. We're not, we're not denying it, we're not, we're not shutting it down, but we're letting it move in a different direction, instead of keeping it bottled up here for months and months and months.
Yep, I hear you, Counselor Bartley. I think too, the, one of the reasons why, I'm not gonna say it, I seconded it because we had the conversation and, I mean, the city solicitor kind of opined on it too as well. But there's another piece where this kind of has to be pushed forward within ninety days, because we've already closed the public hearing. And if we continue to push it back, regardless of the matter, we might not make the ninety days by then. So if we just...
That's February twentieth?
Right, I think so. We could ask Jeff, he knows, he keeps all the details of the exact dates. But ultimately, I think, we're, he told me we have one other meeting that we could push it back, and if we push it back any further than that, then it would extend, it would extend the, the life past the ninety days, right? So, in my opinion, with, with sending it now with the response, it'll allow them to then, if they have something faster that they can respond on, then we can continue to move forward. If not, then they got to start from scratch and, and come with something that's presentable. Counselor Vagan, I did see your hand up, and I'm recognizing you now, I was just finishing my thought, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Your further discussion between you and Counselor Bartley answered my question. Thank you.
Thank you. So, go ahead, Counselor Meg McGrath Smith.
Counselor Meg, I like that. My, the reason why I didn't second was because I, I wondered why it was better as a mechanism to send it back to council, rather than just table it here and, and, and still ask for further response from legal and from the Tourism Committee.
So in my, and Bartley could probably clear up, Counselor Bartley could probably clear up a little more, but to my, my perception, the way I see it is, if I send, if we send it back to the council with no recommendation, it would, they would hear that by tonight, the end of tonight, and tomorrow, they would actually be reaching out to us to try to figure out, or let us know what it is that they're trying to put out there, and then when it gets to full council, then there could be something that could be done, right?
We could act on it within the ninety days.
We could act on it possibly that day, or push it back to, and then still have the ninety days to still act on it. If not, then we go back to having them flush it out and sending it to us too at the same time, which is technically what Counselor Bartley is referring to as well. So with that being said, I, I, motion...
On the motion?
On the motion.
If everybody's done, I mean, I don't want to cut anybody off, but if everybody's blocking, then I...
So, the motion was that...
Return it to city council.
Return it to city council with no recommendation. So much conversation, I lost it. Do I hear a second?
It was seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 That's four, yea. Jenny, do I hear a aye? Okay, four.
Maybe she's, is she muted? I can't, I can't see it.
She's muted now, but she probably...
Well, it sounds like four, nothing.
Yeah, four, nothing.
Okay, good enough. Okay, you want, you want to take...
I think we could take a possible break until these guys are ready.
What about five? Do we take, you tell me.
We can take a five.
We can take a five.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion to remove agenda item five from the table.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item five was filed by Counselor Murphy Rambeletti, ordered that the city council amend ordinance two, three, three, six, A and B, to reflect the streamlined process for disposition of tax title properties and other properties not needed to the city for municipal purposes, and to add a new section for the creation of a butter lot sales program. Counselor Murphy Rambeletti, I don't think is currently present to add more to this, but we've met on several occasions, and it's been tabled on several occasions. Counselor Vagan, if you would like to expand a little more on where we're at with this, I would totally welcome that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a legal form before us, which I believe is the second or third one. It has been complicated and problematic with language deleted that the committee did not request to be deleted.
I remember.
In its current form, the language, which everybody needs to read every word to really get it, but the significant things that I would point out for folks that haven't been on the committee, is that in the new a butter lots program, the properties have to actually be touching the eligible lot. And there have been at least one objection raised to that, because in a very densely developed area downtown, a property might not be actually touching the lot, but it could be within fifty feet of the lot. So that seemed to be overly restrictive to somebody who might need some extra parking or something. Beyond that, I'm not sure if everybody's had a chance to read it or not, but there's also been a legal opinion provided by Attorney Mantuleski relative to our current ordinance, and I really think, this is my opinion, that before we go to amending our ordinances, we need to be following our current ordinances, and it's been brought to our attention that we have not been doing the public auctions. And it seems to me, we would be wise to comply with the current state laws and come into compliance with our current ordinance before we amend it. It's, it's been a very complicated and messy process, but this most recent legal opinion really caused me to think, maybe we better just work with what we have, get that straightened out, and then maybe down the road, take a look at adding more complexities to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Vagan. Counselor McGrath Smith?
It's interesting that you just said that, Counselor Vagan. This past weekend, when I was at the Mass Municipal Association Conference, I spent some time with the Fitchburg delegation, and it's mentioned in Solicitor Mantuleski's letter, and we were talking about their really successful a butter program, where they were selling a budding locks by auction, and I thought, oh, that's really interesting, it's a very different process than we've been using as a city. And then, when I was reviewing the ordinance materials, I saw that that came up as well, that was named that we absolutely should be following Mass General Law, Chapter seventy-seven B, where these properties should be disposed through auction, and we haven't been.
What's the site on that?
What was the question?
What's the site? You, you referenced a Mass Law?
It was the Mass Municipal Association.
Yeah, but you said something B?
It's referenced in Solicitor Mantuleski's letter, it's Chapter seventy-seven B, Mass General Law.
Uh, thank you, ma'am.
I didn't mean to turn this into a roundtable.
No worries, I got you, Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, one, I don't, I'm sure I must have that letter somewhere, I'm sure it was sent to the full city council, but I, I don't have it on my computer, so that's, if I could get, have Jeff maybe send it to, just email it to me, I don't, I don't seem to have it handy, and it wasn't sent with a packet that I, that we received in the email. Now, I, maybe in our packet, is our packet here? Oh, well, then, I'll stand corrected, and I do apologize, let me just, let me, no, it's got to be in the packet. Okay, chapter, wow.
Counselor Vagan, I see your hand.
Yeah, I'll, I'll...
I just wanted to...
Thank you, just look at this.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Let everybody know, we just received it today.
Ooh, okay.
Oh.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for that, Counselor Vagan.
Today, yeah, there you go, all right, I knew I didn't see it in the packet.
So I'm, yeah, okay.
All right, thank you. So, all right, well, I'm just, let me just make my two cents on this one, Mr. Chair, if I may, when, when you recognize me.
I've already recognized, no, 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 actually, go ahead, yeah, Counselor Bartley.
You're sure, you're sure, oh, yeah, I don't, I don't want to bully me.
No worries.
Uh, thank you. So I, how do I put it? I'm glad Attorney Moriarty's in the room with us today, and, and if he was allowed to speak, he could probably vouch for it, because he's been doing this a lot longer than me, however, I've been doing it for a long time myself. Real estate law, on the surface, may seem like a simple thing, but property law is far from simple. And when you start adding in what we just see as a memorandum, a little bit of a complicating factor, I was going to point out to the chair, and to the law department, a couple other sections in Chapter forty, Section fifteen and fifteen A, that, that, it's a municipal law that I researched relative to tax titles that we're, we're not doing. And then, Mr. Chair, when I look at this, and this new Section four, "This ordinance shall take effect upon its passage," well, that's very normal, okay, we all know that. However, it goes on to say, "The terms of this ordinance shall be retroactively applied to all properties foreclosed on due to tax title by the City of Holyoke." And then, when you scan back up here, everything is majority, as opposed to our normal ordinances, which declare a surplus, is two-thirds. That's not where this is going. Now, I know what the order said to make it more efficient. We have an efficient process as it is. There has been no complaints, when I chaired committees, ever, relative to, "Why are you tying up a property?" You know what ties up a property, Mr. Chair? We don't hear anything from OPED. We have never had a communication, other than once in my twelve-year career, from the Treasury Department, that we want to have an auction. That's the department heads' job. Now, we've got this ordinance that has gone through many iterations, including, including part which is unbelievable, taking away the power completely from city council to make any decisions relative to real property, to leave it with the department heads. That was in language last year. So I am of the opinion, that, again, back to what I said at the prior order, Mr. Chair, and in terms of efficiency, this is a solution looking for a problem. The problem doesn't exist. This is so unbelievably convoluted. I think we need to hear from the department heads, specifically Mr. Vega, specifically Mr. Casey, why are they implying that the bottleneck is here, when they don't deliver the properties to us? Whenever Johnny and Erin come in here with, with a property for DGR, or we put it right committee, and we get her, kick it right back out. It moves like that. Come back to us with missile properties, come back to us with tax title properties. I give one anecdote, I had to beg the law department to take out two tax title properties in Ward Three, I had to beg them, and they filed it under my name, and now it's in DGR for the last meeting, but they've been sitting there for over a year. The bottleneck is here? There's something else going on with this ordinance. I am not going to cast aspersions, I don't care, because it's a new day, but this is not working. If I may, and I, believe me, I, we could go on, but we, we know how these ordinance meetings go, and there's no, no reason for that.
Yeah, we're trying to cut that, trying to cut that.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I'll finish this way. I would just like to kick this back to city council. You heard what the maker of the order said at the last meeting this summer, I was here. We've gone through this a million times, let's take a vote on it. I agree with her. Let's, I, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna make a motion right now to refer this back to city council without a recommendation. That's my motion.
Second.
I guess what I, the only thing I would say on the discussion is, I would, I would ask that we table it one more time, to allow the office, OPED, to come in and elaborate. Just one, only, and I understand that we've, we've tabled a thousand times, I, my intention today was to not table anything, was to get everything done and to move forward, but just for the sake of allowing someone to be able to explain the reasons why this has come forward, one more table, that's what I would say. But there's already a motion. Counselor Bartley?
No, you, you don't have to vote for it.
No, no, go ahead.
It is what it is.
No, no, I know.
But, and, and believe me, I respect the chair of every committee. Normally, if the chair says, in a meeting, I want to take, norm, ninety-nine times out of a hundred, I'm gonna go defer to the chair. This is the one time where I'm not, and what, and I'm gonna tell you why. The original order was filed May sixteenth, June twenty-seventh, August twenty-second, September twelfth, November twenty-eighth, December twelfth, and now here they are. Where are the department heads? If you give them one more time, all you're doing, in my humble, is you're backing up the jacket again. This, I think, will have the same effect. Kick it back to city council, they have time between now and next time we meet to come up with a, with a communication, they can send it to city council if necessary. If necessary, we'll throw it back to ordinance. But this way here, we get a chance to vote on it. That's what the maker of the order wanted at the last meeting. She said point blank, we've had so many meetings, why do we, why don't we take a vote on it right now? Well, okay, fine, now I, here's a chance. Let's go, send it back to city council, and we'll take the vote. That's, so I'm not gonna retract my, respectfully, I'm not.
No, the motion's already up. Nah, it's already up. Don't worry, bro. Like, I'm with it. Anybody else on the discussion? So on the motion, and the motion is that we send this back to committee, or it's back to full council with no full, with no recommendation. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Nay.
Nay.
So 3-2, is what it sounds like.
3-2. It passes.
I think we do need to do roll call votes.
I think so, too.
On the recommendations.
All right. Let's do a roll call. Counselor Vagan?
Yes.
Counselor Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Bartley?
Yes.
Counselor Meg McGrath Smith?
No.
Counselor Isra Rivera?
No.
That's 3-2. It passes, and will be recommended to the full council without a recommendation.
Okay, what would the chair like to do with the, with the public? Just a point of order, because I am a little bit out of practice on this part of the meeting. We're waiting for planning board?
Yes.
Okay, do we have to have planning board for these three?
I, that I would defer to Counselor Vagan, because she was the chair for the last two years, and.
Oh, sure, for longer than that, but I'll ask Mr. Bissonette or Mrs. Vagan, either way, they could just.
I'm, I'm happy to respond.
Yeah, I trust Counselor Vagan.
Both committees are authorized to meet independently, and when we meet together, it is to be customer-friendly, to keep people who have an interest in a particular item that requires both boards only to need to weigh in at one meeting rather than two. So it's not a requirement, but it has been a practice that has been done more often than not.
Well, once you're done, I'm gonna make a motion.
But in all these cases, we've had multiple public hearings, I would note, particularly Items 1 and 2.
Yeah, I was gonna say the same.
When you're ready, I'll make a motion. I'm gonna make your motion.
Recording stopped.
Good. Shut me up. I'm gonna make a motion to remove agenda item.
You have to stop.
Oh, we do have to, oh, really? Oh, we literally have to stop?
Yeah, if it's not recorded, we have to stop.
Oh.
No, you're fine. That was just the local computer, the.
Oh, the main computer. Okay, we're good. All right, all right, we're good.
I'll make a motion that we take Agenda Item 1 from the table, and that we open the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna, aye. Public hearing, this is Item 1. This was filed by Counselor McGee, ordered the zoning ordinance, Section 7.8, wireless telecommunication facilities and antennas be amended to include small wire facilities. We had a variety of different meetings with the planning board. We've had Holy Gas and Electric in a variety of different times to kind of speak on this. We've also had someone from the community to come in and present on a variety of different health issues that could possibly be, or could come up due to some of these things. Counselor Vagan has her hand raised, and I will entertain Counselor Vagan most. She has a lot of more knowledge with regards to this order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That was an excellent summary, and because we have received a high volume of information, and we have turned it over to the Law Department for their review, and we then need to move forward with what amendments we might want to make and ask legal to make to our current ordinance, I believe we have received all of the pertinent information that we need to through the public hearing process, and that we can then move forward with a draft with, if there are any changes that need to be made, I believe there are to accommodate the smaller wireless. I will note that I would encourage, if the committee members haven't had a chance to read all the information, because there is a lot of it, that I have found it extremely interesting and troubling, that our Board of Health could not give us any feedback on this, and that we are prohibited, in essence, by the way the federal law is written, from considering health considerations in the creation of this ordinance. So I find it very troubling that that is the case, but nonetheless, I do think we need to bring to bear whatever considerations for the public that we can in this process. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do remember that base, too, that that was a concern for me, too, as well, the fact that we can't kind of regulate it based on federal law. Counselor Bartley?
Yes, and so I certainly remember the advocate, and Todd was certainly filing this on behalf of the advocate, who's been before us, going back many years now. And, and I have had the chance to read most of what you provided. I can't truthfully say I read all of the 123-page draft ordinance that was provided, but I'm gonna sum it up as best I can, and it should take me under 60 seconds. Certainly, there are health issues implied, not proven. Certainly, there are major federal entities at play that have not completed reports. There are many state agencies in play that have not weighed in at all on this. The definition section on some of these things is really incredible. If you read the draft ordinance language, the restrictions that are put on potential applicants in the City of Holyoke are punitive. The enforcement in the draft is unbelievably complex, and it requires, I think, technical expertise that is beyond anybody in the city side. Now, perhaps HGN E wants to get into enforcement, but I don't think so, based upon their very limited diatribe that I happen to be included in the packet. I'm thinking that this is a, is, unlike the other ones, this is a problem that requires a solution and requires enforcement. I just don't think Holyoke, the city government, is a proper medium for it. Now, I will, this, in this one, I'll actually defer the chair, how you want to lose. I'm of the opinion that we should likely close the public hearing, that we should kick it out to Legal Department to come back with some kind of a draft, but I am just giving a preview of coming attractions, unless it is really, really narrow, the, and it also defines how, you know, what the financial, I mean, if you read this, which I'm sure you have, if this ordinance and some of the language in it opens the city up to tremendous liability. For example, if we do not, as a city government, properly enforce some of the restrictions, people get sick or whatever it is, can you imagine what the turnaround would be on a civil lawsuit? The city just said, we're gonna go ahead and enforce all this stuff that really, 90% of us have no clue what it's about, and you need technical expertise. You are really putting the city's neck way out there to say that we're gonna enforce things that really we're not capable of enforcing. I'm just saying, I'm happy to see if we can close the public hearing. I'm happy to refer this back to Law Department, but I would humbly ask the Law Department to really think about narrowly tailoring what's before us and really keeping in mind potential liability for the City of Holyoke. Thank you.
Counselor Vagan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I think, as I mentioned earlier, we have received all the pertinent information that is needed. This information has all been with the Law Department since it was submitted, for their ability to review it. So I would like to offer a motion to close the public hearing at this time.
Um, real quick, I just want to recognize Counselor McGrath Smith, and then I'll entertain that motion.
Oh, sure, we're just under discussion anyway.
Yeah, I'll drive my.
All right.
I'll drive.
Thank you for that, Counselor Vagan. And then, as soon as she's done, you can go ahead and do the motion. Counselor.
We do have to check in with the public as well, just as a reminder.
Thank you, yes. Thank you for that. Counselor McGrath Smith?
I just wanted to mirror also what Counselor Vagan said. We got, received a letter from our former Director of Health, Sean Gonzalez, and he had, of course, included a number of excerpts from the Massachusetts Association of Health Board's legal handbook. And I think some of the folks, you know, the information that's presented is worrying. You know, I will quote the following, "The fact that towers are ubiquitous must not be confused with the presumption that they do not present certain health risks. And the FCC has preempted local government action where a local border commission cannot deny a permit application based upon real or perceived risk. In order to effectively block the placement of a cell tower, the municipality must find other grounds than health risk and radiation exposure." One of them that I read in the documents that you are allowed to make a decision based on is aesthetics, but not health. I do fear what that means when then decisions get made about where towers get placed, because where is their perceived aesthetic value and where is there not in our city? And I'm concerned about then where these towers get placed if we do move forward with this. And in the MAHB legal guidance, it did cite not studies in the U.S., because there has been nothing that's cumulative, but there is world literature in different studies in Germany and other countries where they have found a connection between cancer rates and people who lived between 400 and 500 feet or closer to a small wireless facility.
Thank you, Counselor. Yes.
Yeah, so I, I, okay, so there's an issue in law, Mike Bissonette, we can speak to it better than me, called preemption, where if we're, if the federal government or state government says, you guys can't do anything, then we can't. That's preemption. So we're going way down a road here, and we're asking the Law Department to do something that, I hope Mike takes this to heart, that if he comes back and says, reviewing the materials that Ms. McGrath just noted, relative to that, that we are preempted from even involving it, other than aesthetics, I think before they start spinning their wheels and coming up with all sorts of language, that they ought to need to communicate that to us. And then one final point, within that memorandum that was attached, within that attachment that was to the memorandum by Mr. Sean Gonçalves, it says, "The issue of cell tower safety is one which is of uncertain scientific proof, conflicting studies, et cetera, considerable uncertainty." And now we've got a potential ordinance that says, well, if somebody gets sick, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, you know, why do we permit this stuff? And who's liable for it? You know, you, that's just how I think. So I guess, I guess that's that. So I'll stop there.
Thank you, Counselor Bartley. I think the thing, too, when it came forward, I remember a while back, I think we have kind of, we're kind of, our hands are kind of tied, because they want to, they're, they want to come in and put these things up, and there is no policy, and we have to kind of come up with a policy for it to happen. And according to the federal government, we can't not come up, like, we can't not allow it to happen. So it, I hear exactly what you're saying, where hopefully, our city solicitors can narrow it down so that we are protected, in the sense that if something does happen. It is a concern for me, too, as well. But before we go into motions, I see someone's hand raised, and I believe it's from the public.
Well, open up the public, yeah, this is the time.
So I would like to open it up to the public, the public hearing. Your hand is raised, feel free.
Hi, thank you for having me.
Real quick, before you start, please say your name and your address, and then you can go ahead.
Kaylee DeGrace, and 99 Meadowbrook Road in Holyoke.
Thank you.
I don't, I don't know, I just, I feel like some of the issues are one in the same, right? Like, I, I wouldn't want to live near a cell tower, because both, I would worry about the health risks, potential or otherwise, but also, I don't want to look at one. And I think that aesthetics, you know, like, certainly, I don't think that residents aesthetically want a cell tower in their, like, where they live, because they don't want to look at it. And so I think that is something to, like, I don't feel like they're mutually exclusive. So I think that, you know, as any policies get made, I think that's something that can be considered.
Anybody else in the public? And again, Kaylee, thank you for stepping up and voicing your opinion. When we host these public hearings, we want to make sure that anyone, anyone and everyone can be able to come through and voice their opinions, whether it's in person or online. Really appreciate you doing that. So, Counselor Bartley?
I just, I don't normally do this, but I do want to respond to the, to the public. So I, I generally agree with 90% of what was said there, but you've got to put it in context. Nobody wants to have a cell, this is, this is for small stuff, right? So this, you know, we're not, we're not talking about permitting, that's already taken care of elsewhere within our city ordinances. So we already have ordinances relative to citing cellular towers. This is for, this is for wireless communication, and what this potential ordinance says is that we will do away with wireless communication to the extent we can, and we would prefer to have hardwired telecom. In other words, this one wants to get rid of the 5G network and wants to do all sorts of other things that are really, in my opinion, probably moving the economy forward, but there is no question about it, a potential risk and a potential health risk. So when the prior speaker says, we don't want to have a cellphone tower, well, that's really not what this is about. What this is really about, in my opinion, is to do away with all the wireless and then just go to hardwired stuff. And as I said, we have ordinances relative to citing it already in place. So I think there's reason for concern, and I always like to hear from the public, but in that particular instance, I mean, look, everybody shut off their cellphones and shut off their YouTube TV and all the rest of it, and then, fine, we can go back to analog, and that'd probably be good, but I think it's a little too late for that now. So a lot of us are gonna have to sort of deal with the fact that we're gonna have to have, maybe sometimes, something's gonna be maybe not as aesthetically pleasing as we want it to. What the GNE and what others are doing on the cutting edge, they're trying to make smaller towers, smaller communication systems, and hang them up to telephone poles and put them in places that are a little more out of the way that we're, that we don't really see. I mean, we'd all love to be on the street with, like, downtown here, I mean, I'm so impressed, so many years ago, they put all the wires underground. It really is an amazing feat that the GNE did for such extensive, extensive footprint to put up, but you can't do it everywhere, although we would like to. I remember the former Ward 7 counselor, gosh, he was pushing that as often as he could, but it was, we can't, GNE came back, said it's just, it's cost prohibitive. And that just goes back to the aesthetics that the prior speaker just mentioned. So I think we can, I think that base is gonna be covered in terms of aesthetics. The problem that we're really facing here is what impact on health does the wireless have? And there's so many unknowns, and how we regulate something like that, especially at the local level, with all these unknowns, to me, it's almost impossible. Thanks.
(inaudible). Counselor, real quick, before I recognize you, Counselor Reagan, I got confused real quick, Counselor Bartley, only because to my understanding, this is to incorporate smaller wireless facilities, right, within the ordinance we already have? Because we don't have something kind of designed around that.
Yeah.
Okay, just make, just, you said something.
But what, if I may?
No, go ahead, go ahead.
What, if you read, if you read the language, I'm sure you have, but at some point, your head's going to explode. What she wants to say in here is that wireless, if we can limit it, if we, the preference would be to go to hardwired communications as opposed to wireless because there's so many unknowns relative to 5G. So this thing wants to regulate it because we, what the advocate is saying is that, well, we realize it's gonna, it's gonna happen, but we need to narrow it to the.
No, 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 yeah, no, you're talking, yeah, I was thinking about, like, from our side. No, you're totally right. That's exactly what the advocate was saying. I'm with you. I was, thank you for that. Counselor Reagan, go ahead.
Thank you. I would just like to advocate for the language that we developed to include a strong consideration around the aesthetics. Because I think we're making a few assumptions about where these would go. And secondarily, I would like there to be a public process if these will be placed within X feet of a private or a public residence. I want there to be some process where the public would at least be aware and potentially have the ability to weigh in on, if that's possible. So I would just put that out there for consideration by our Law Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bartley.
I couldn't agree more. So, and that's, that's in fact what the language is talking about here. How far away from human, where people live and pass by, how, what's the distance? So, for example, do we have to have taller telephone poles and put them, put them up there? Is that, is that the answer? I, I don't know. But if, but if you take it to the nth degree, do we put them out in Ashley Reservoir where nobody can, they're not near any humans? However, that's an awful pretty place to start putting cellphone towers and that would pockmark it probably in some person's eyes. We are, everybody knows we have a huge cellphone tower right in the middle of Ward 6, right in the public park. I mean, I, I hope, I hope the public knows that. The Parks Department has been collecting rent on that for 20 years and it's a pretty handsome check that comes in on a monthly basis. I mean, so you gotta, you gotta sort of deal, deal with it to some extent. But I agree with Linda that if, if, once we get to the point where we start mounting these things, the butters need to be.
I'm afraid to say that there, there are a variety of them already.
There are, I know that.
There's a couple across the street, over by, a part of Izzo Colombian on the top. And there's some on top of the Old Stefano alleys. So I think that's, the order behind it is trying to get it, catch up, I think. But thank you, and I guess I would say on the motion.
Well, she's going to make her, I'll second Linda's motion to, to close the public hearing.
All in favor, so Linda, can we get the motion real quick so that we can?
Oh, okay. I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, that's five.
And then I'll make a second motion that we, this is down table committee, that refer this back to legal to come up with some kind of verbiage. And you want, I don't know what the chair wants to do. Do you want to give him three months, two months, a week? What do you want to do?
I'll give him two months.
Two months?
Hang on.
Go ahead, Counselor Reagan.
A plain of order, so this is a joint public hearing. So once we close our public hearing, we have to wait for the recommendation from the Planning Board.
Oh, thanks, Linda. Yeah, okay, so.
Thank you, Linda, for that.
Okay.
I'll just, I'll just, so it's a motion, so it's on the table.
And the Planning Board seems like they've just arrived. Are we still waiting for some members or?
One member will be coming in person and we have everybody joining, the rest by Zoom. At the very least, we do need to open up before we continue.
Go ahead, you're looking saucy over there with the retired.
Nice crown.
Yeah, crown. Yeah, go ahead, do your thing. We've already opened and closed. You guys can go ahead.
All right, I'm going to wait for the chair to take over from there.
Okay, do we have enough people here for me to call for a motion to reopen the public hearing for the short-term wireless?
I've got one, two, a zone change, yes, I've got the three of you. And Nathan is probably there.
He's here already.
Okay.
So this is actually the small wireless, not the short-term wireless, which does not exist. But the small wireless facilities, do I have a motion on the floor?
A move that we reopen our public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor?
By roll call vote, Gernander?
Yes.
Rosanna?
Yes, ma'am.
She is. Nathan?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
And Mimi?
Yes. And just to update you all, although I realize you've already closed your public hearing. We are basically at this point waiting on comments from HG&E that will be incorporated into our final draft of this ordinance. We're going to have to continue our public hearing because we will be considering that language when it comes in. But as soon as it is in and we can close and finalize and send you a recommendation, we will. So on that note, do we have a motion to continue this public hearing?
Public? I'm sorry. Maybe for the record, can we just ask anybody from the public?
Oh, we can. Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on our need for more commentary before we can finalize our draft? Seeing none. Can we just re-up the previous motion? I see Kate saying it.
Can I just ask, Attorney Mantuleski, would taking this up at our next meeting work? Will we have something by then?
I'm very hopeful. I was going to say that we do have some comments from HG&E, but nothing finalized yet. So I think that by the first meeting in February of the Planning Board, we should hopefully have something and I feel, I feel pretty confident about that, so, yeah.
So I'll propose that we continue this public hearing to February 13th at 5:30.
Second?
Your second.
Second, can you hear me when I say second?
We can, yes.
Okay, great, okay. Just double checking.
All in favor? Gernander?
Yes.
Rosanna?
Yes, ma'am.
Nathan?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Mimi?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, we move on to the next one? Entertainer motion to take up item two? Open the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to take up item two and reopen the public hearing.
And I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 May I ask, which one is your item two?
You want to read it, though.
Yeah, no, I will, I will. I was just going to see if they were going to open two, but since she doesn't know which one it is, I'll read it first. So for us, it's filed by Counselor McGee, order that the zoning ordinance be amended to add a section for short-term rentals in addition to amending Section 2 definitions and any other sections that may apply to this use.
Okay, and I'd entertain a motion to reopen the public hearing on the same order that the zoning ordinance be amended to add a section for short-term rentals in addition to amending Section 2 definitions and any other sections that may apply to this use.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Gernander?
Yes, Chair.
Rosanna?
Yes, ma'am.
Nathan?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Mimi?
Yes.
Thank you. So I would like to first recognize Counselor Reagan. First, she has her hand held up, but I was going to recognize her anyways as the former chair so that she could just start it off to as, just for the continuation. Counselor Reagan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So on this particular order, we've all been a little bit in the clouds because there was no specificity with it. We reached out to the maker of the order and we've had some feedback, but very limited, from the Planning Department staff. And at this point, we still have no further clarification or insight relative to this whole question. So it makes me think we've kind of got the cart in front of the horse here. I don't really know what else we can or should do with this. We've had some variety of feedback from the public. We've had drafts that show that anything of, oh, wait, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I take that back. We have had feedback from our building department that the state is revising their building code so that we should be waiting for whatever we do for that, but we've been waiting now for a long time. I'm sorry, I was on to tiny houses there for a minute in my mind. I have a cold and it's clouding my brain.
No worries.
But that's the last information that we have. So all I can say.
Thank you. I don't know how this works. I think Mimi, you recognize Kate, right?
Kate, do you want to speak to that? It's always awkward because we're in joint hearings here and we're always jumping back and forth.
Sure, I was just going to say that Daven gave us the ordinance from Quincy, which is relatively comprehensive and that he thought was a good approach in general. And our plan is that we, when we can find time in our schedule, hopefully sometime soon, we would be, as the Planning Board, going over the Quincy ordinance and looking at it and seeing in what ways it might be helpful for us to just revise that, to use it. But of course, you know, more input about what are, really the relevant concerns would obviously be welcome, but I think we have a plan to proceed with that, if that's acceptable to everybody here.
And, you know, oh, I'm sorry. Your turn.
Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I've had a chance to look at this and I'm trying to ascertain, let me just go back to my, okay, this has been.
Excuse me, I'm having a little bit of trouble hearing Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Sharon, I'll amend that. How am I doing now? Sharon?
Yeah, I guess the best you can.
That's all I can do, right? Yeah, so I, I'll just, I'll just deal with it. If you want, I'll yell louder, but I don't think you want that. So, okay, short-term rentals, one, two, three, four, at least times, April, May, August, October. And now here we are again. And when you, and all's we have to show for it is we have a draft from Quincy, Mass, a city of 100,000 people with a much larger staff than the city of Holyoke is going to have in terms of enforcing things. We had the prior speaker say that the building codes are about to be amended. So we could be doing something that is so precipitous, it'll just boomerang, boomerang right back in our face because the building codes are going to be amended. What I'm hearing from, from, from the memo we received is that, is that we should hold off on this. To me, we ought to close the public hearing, refer this, you know, get an opinion from planning and then refer it back to City Council, take a vote. I don't think it's ready for it. And I'm just going to point out one thing to, I don't think we're at Holyoke ready for it, but I'm going to point out one thing to the chair. If the chair recalls what we just discussed in the, in the prior order relative to putting up wireless, that we want to have butters be notified and we want to have, we want to have public input relative to this, relative to wireless telecom. Here's what the public input is in terms of the city of Quincy's public input. Counselor notification, upon receiving an application from a prospective operator of a short-term residential unit, the agency in charge of this shall notify the local ward counselor of the application by email. What is that? That might as well, you might as well just say it went to a black hole and nobody's going to know about it, no neighbor's going to know about it. You're hypo, you're putting a hypothesis that perhaps the ward counselor, A, open his or her email and B, disseminate, disseminate it to any of the butters. But that may or may not be true. That's as good as they have for public notification? This is what you have after five meetings? You know, you wonder why, and again, I'm going, I'm going to editorialize. You wonder why ordinance meetings go on forever and ever and ever? Because of stuff like this. It's simply, in my opinion, Mr. Chair, not ready for prime time. We're much better off, I mean, look at the verb, look at the order itself. The, look how limited that is. There's, there's nothing before us. And you've had multiple meetings and public hearings? What are we doing? You know, again, you want us to keep backing up the jacket and making the folder even bigger? That's your call. I'll do what you want in this. But I'm, and so if you want us to just continue the public hearing on this, to hear more, but I don't, like, as I said for the other orders, I just don't believe this is ready. I think we ought to go on to things that we can actually do for the city of Holyoke as opposed to, you know, waiting for either our zoning officials get back to us or better yet, waiting for a revised building code, which, which who knows when that's coming? To my opinion, let's get to building code, let's get something more, a little more solid. Let's hear from advocates of Airbnbs so we really know, we really know what is that they are expecting. And one last point, you do know these are happening in Holyoke. You're fully aware. So it's, it's already taking place in an unregulated market. And, you know, maybe the maker of the order wanted to have some kind of a, you know, permitting process. But I, I really don't think, I really don't think we're ready for that. And look, like I just said, who is going to enforce it? And then think about potential liability. If we've got a regulatory scheme and something happens in an Airbnb, is the city of Holyoke now, because we're not enforcing our regulations, is the city of Holyoke now liable for some nefarious act or actions that took place in the Airbnb? Really, you've got a jacket, Mr. Chair, that is, is, you know, like Joe McGivern's old locker. I mean, it's just filled to the brim. You know, tell me how you want to move forward, I'll do it, but, you know, that's my sense, two cents. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Bartley.
Thank you.
Just if I may, and I know, I see Counselor Bacon's hand up, she was in line ahead of me. But I think at this point, it is perhaps worth noting that, you know, we certainly don't disagree as a board about, you know, this is taking too long. We don't have any direction. We have incoming information that will affect whatever the city wants to do. And I think as far as we're concerned, the question is merely whether to leave it on the agenda so that we don't ever have to re-notice a public hearing on it or, you know, get rid of it and do a new public hearing when the time comes. But among the things that affect our thinking is the new building code. The fact that we are about to launch a new comprehensive plan process and, you know, as with any major policy issue affecting the whole city, it might be worthwhile to consider it in connection with the information about what Holyoke wants and where we want to go, that we hope to develop during this process. And that, in fact, although at this point, it's practically ancient history, we do know that this is happening in Holyoke. We know it in part because Mary Monahan, who does run a very well-regarded Airbnb, came in and addressed the ordinance committee about it extensively some months ago. And, you know, I'm sure whenever we take this up again, her comments, which include, you know, what makes for good management practices for one of these, will be invaluable. But we'll be able to refer to it back then and, you know, I have not called the rest of the Planning Board, but I suspect that we're comfortable with however the City Council and the ordinance. and the ordinance committee want to proceed.
Thank you, uh, Mimi. And real quick, before I recognize you, Linda, because I remember seeing your hand up, I was just giving them their turn because we're kinda bouncing back and forth just to keep some flow. I hear what Counselor Bartley was saying, but I also hear what, um, um, Chair, Madam Chair, Panich is also saying with regards to not having to possibly repost it and then keeping it, um, on the load, so that way, when things are ready, we can just pull it right back out and just get it working again. I totally get that piece, too. Um, Counselor Vagan, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, so, normally, I would be in the group saying to continue it, to keep it alive, but I just think it's been going on too long, and we have no indication that there will be something forthcoming from this state anytime soon. And so I just think it's creating a needless tracking and scheduling exercise, and it's just taking up space and time. And unfortunately, I mean, I took these up because our council president had requested them. I didn't really know the entire context, but now that we've been looking at them all this time, we do. So, I am, um, I would actually, uh, think that it's time to close the public hearing, and I really think, um, and I'll defer to the planning board for whatever recommendation they wanna make to us, but I think we could just give it leave-to-withdraw without prejudice so that if at any time we wanted to go forward, there wouldn't be any technical hurdles to overcome. But, that's my two cents on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody from planning board? Before I recognize Meg?
No. I would just ask my board members, is there anyone here who objects to either closing or, well, we would close? Uh, we don't have the leave-to-withdraw problem that you guys have. I mean, we can continue to work on it anyway, but it's a matter of how my board wants to proceed.
Well, I think if it's, if it's something that's already happening, and at some point it needs to be regulated, I don't see why we would close it or take it off the table if it's gonna come back. I mean, it's a lot of information, this is new, um, it's tedious, it's a lot of work, um, it keeps getting tables, because we do have to have all parties present to get all the information at hand. So I understand how there could be some frustration, but I think logically it makes sense, at some point, we're gonna have to address it. So, do we drag it now and just get it done, or do we wait till there's a problem like everything else, and then we find a solution? That's just my opinion.
I mean, I would also note at this point that we can continue the public hearing indefinitely if we want to, without it in any way impacting the ordinance committee. So, you know, I'm certainly not going to beg them not to close, it sounds perfectly reasonable to me.
Yeah, my suggestion would be let them close if they'd like to, and we can continue it to the next date at which we can discuss it, and we can continue to work on it and report back to them when we have something for them.
Just a quick point of order, I think Mr. Trung's had his hand up, Madam Chair of the planning department for a while, so I...
Yeah, um, I was gonna, I was gonna say, because I don't think she can see him.
Yeah, we can't see it from here.
Yeah.
No, obviously, so, just pointing out.
Okay, um, I guess I'll just, um, yeah, so, I mean, one thing to consider is, the state is already, already have the draft edition, tenth edition of the building code, which has auditions for, auditions for short-term rentals, and, uh, I think we might wanna chat with the building department or other officials about what the rough timeline, when it'll be adopted will be, but, uh, that's another aspect to consider. Um, once the building code, the tenth edition, becomes fully adopted, no longer in draft, but full adopt, in full adoption, maybe it'll take half a year, because it, that process started last year, so maybe it'll be done by half, in the middle of the year, I, I don't know, but you might, the building official probably have a better sense. Um, once that becomes into effect, some level of enforcement responsibility does fall into the building department and the rest of the city when it comes to short-term rentals. So, um, again, yeah, we don't wanna create a lot of stuff and then find out, realize that it doesn't, it contradicts the building code that's in effect and whatnot, so maybe closing or pausing it in some way makes sense, because indefinitely, just discussing this, when we know that there is already a building code that's most likely gonna be in effect, uh, gonna be in effect at some point, um, might not, might not make much sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McGrath Smith?
I just wanted to name that, it was interesting reading through the document that was sent concerning Quincy's process. It seemed more that they were concerned with just knowing where they were in the city and registering them as such. I didn't see any mechanism in it where they would necessarily have to, um, operate almost under a license. I know that there are some communities who have been looking at the idea of limiting the number of Airbnbs, and then being able to say and set up a process whereby, by lottery, by application, uh, you know, there's a different, uh, process for, uh, Airbnbs to, to be registered in the city. I don't see Quincy doing that and trying to limit them, but I know, um, that nearby Belcher Town has been looking at that. There are other local communities that we may want to look at as well. And I agree that it just seems like it's at the very beginning stages. I'm glad to hear that the planning board is willing to keep their hearing open and keep the conversation going, and then bring us back something that is more defined and more situated based on what Holyoke's main concerns are.
Thank you. Um, and then, for, for, for me, before we proceed, I, I, I too, I was gonna question, can the planning board stay open if we did close, right? Because it would be good to, for the work to continue, well, even though it may be put at a pause or maybe, um, leave-to-withdraw, I'm not saying that's what it's gonna be, but if it were, um, something that you guys kept working on, a, a live, living document, so that way, when it does come back, the, um, it's kind of already hashed out. And then, um, pointing out that the fact that the actual building codes are still not something that are settled yet, um, and having us to probably have to re-edit them again and bring it back to the council, maybe do a whole nother public hearing thing, um, I think it might make sense to possibly put things on a pause for a second. But, Counselor Vagan, I think for...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Once, uh, we've had a chance to see if there's anybody from the public who wishes to speak on this matter, I feel comfortable to make a motion for consideration of the committee to close our public hearing, getting the consensus that the planning board will stay open to continue the work as it may develop.
Thank you.
And just to answer, um, Chair Rivera's question, these are, uh, distinct hearings by two different bodies. We just happened to come together for convenience sake, so there is no legal impediment to our continuing when you close.
Right.
Thank you. And I guess, if there's nothing else on the discussion, um, I would like to entertain...
The public?
Yeah, the public. For anyone that's online or here in person, feel free to either raise your hand online or come up to the microphone here in person. Online, I see Kaylee again, um, I would say name and address again before you speak, and then, Mike, you can come to the mic after she's done.
Hi, my name is Kaylee DeGrace, uh, 99 Meadowbrook Road in Holyoke. Um, and I just wanna say, like, I'm in favor of short-term rentals, and I would hope to see that we don't limit them to as much as we can by Mass state law. You know, I think people have property rights, um, and I think that, you know, I think it's perfectly fair and reasonable if someone owns a piece of property and they wanna rent it out, whether it be short-term or long-term, that people be able to do that. Um, and that's just sort of where I stand on the issue.
Thank you. Anyone else online or in person? Not seeing or hearing anyone?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that, uh, we close our public hearing.
Second?
All in favor?
I'm a yes.
I, I think we need a roll call.
Let's take a roll call. Uh, Counselor Vagan?
Yes.
Counselor Meg McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Bartley?
Yes.
Uh, Counselor Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
And Counselor Isra Rivera, yes.
Okay, then, I would call for a motion to continue our public hearing to, Kate, did you have a date in mind?
Well, I was thinking our, so far, our February 27th looks like we might have space for it then.
Okay.
And if we don't, we can continue it again. So, I would make a motion that we continue our public hearing to February 27th at 5:30.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? We lost Sharon?
Sorry, I was muted.
Uh, roll call vote, Gernander?
Yes.
Rosanna?
Yes, ma'am.
Nathan?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
And Mimi?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I will, uh, make a motion for this order to, um, return it to the city council with, without a recommendation.
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
Point of order, we have to wait for the planning board.
Yeah, we have to wait for a recommendation.
Okay, well, that sits in the committee.
Counselor Vagan, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we take up item three and reopen the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Item three is, uh, filed by Counselor McGee as well, order the zoning ordinance be amended to add a section for tiny houses, in addition to amending section two definitions and any other sections that may apply to this use.
Yay, and I too would entertain a motion to reopen our public hearing on an order by Counselor McGee to order the zoning ordinance be amended to add a section for tiny houses, in addition to amending section two definitions and any other sections that may apply to this use.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second that.
Yeah, Nathan's already seconded it.
Great, all in favor?
By your roll call vote, Gernander?
Yes.
Rosanna?
Yes, ma'am.
Nathan?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
And Mimi?
Yes. And, if I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes, you may.
Just as background, we are in very much the same position with this order as with the previous order, only more so. I mean, tiny homes are important, it is a huge policy area. We have identified multiple approaches to it. We're not, you know, we think this needs to be a broad decision for the city as a whole, because there are so many potential approaches. We also take note of the fact that densifying zoning so that there can be more, you know, more housing of all kinds in cities is among the priorities of this legislature and the current governor. And there was a hearing on it in the state legislature only yesterday that looked like it was never going to close. They had so many witnesses and they were taking it so seriously. And because of that, and because we do have the comprehensive plan process, which we are going to be hearing way more about in the coming weeks launching, we really feel like this is a good time to, you know, rather than be constantly hurling disconnected bits of information at you, you know, everybody take a step back, let us study this, you know, in consultation with anyone who's interested, which definitely means you all, but let us study it as a city and take the time we need to get this right, and not to present a draft that is instantly going to be contradicted by whatever the state government turns out to do. So, basically, we came tonight with the hope of just making that request to you, rather than with anything new to present.
Thank you. Really appreciate that. Um, Counselor Vagan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I completely agree. We've been just sort of fumbling around in the dark on this through nobody's fault and no ill intention, um, and I think it would be best addressed through the holistic plan for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Vagan. Just, I, I agree too, as a third person. But if there's anybody else, um, from our committee or the planning committee, feel free. Counselor Barton?
Well, actually, I, I would rather hear it from Attorney Marjorie Arty first.
I know, I, I was trying to see who else is ready.
But after he speaks, I, I certainly wanna have, I certainly have an, like, an input.
All right, so there's somebody from the planning board that wants to speak, if, Madam Chair wants to recognize them.
Nathan?
Thank you. I mean, I think I'm not gonna dwell, uh, go into this too much, but I think, looking at this, I realized, um, maybe the bigger question isn't really about tiny houses. Well, first of all, how do we define them? I think everybody has a different definition, but first of all, before that, maybe the ultimate intent I would deduce from this order is, you know, coming up with some kind of clear and streamlined way ordinances and processes for the city to allow the development of affordable housing of many different types and sizes. Um, I think, I think maybe sometimes in this whole process, we might be losing, uh, the sight of the forest or the trees, because we might be dwelling too much on the whole tiny house language, what that is, and maybe we're focusing on specific types of houses, houses with wheels. I think maybe if we step back and look at the underlying purpose of this order, and maybe I, I should, I, I should not speculate on what the order maker's intent was, but at least from my end, that's what kinda came to me as, uh, you know, I was participating in the process. And, uh, uh, one thing I wanna add and I wanna end there, well, two things I wanna add and, and there is, uh, I think, in some ways, creating this two different classes of housing, tiny houses, regular houses, having that really clear distinction might be counterproductive, because you're kinda creating basically two different classes of houses that might get treated differently. And the other part is that, um, one approach that we might really wanna think about, so many other cities allow, um, multiple houses, multifamilies, detached multifamily in the same lot, either by right or with the site plan or special apartment or some kind of mechanism. So, this idea of only allowing, um, attached multifamily homes on the same property, that's mostly the current zoning, uh, with the Holyoke, although there are some special subdivision provision that allow you to have detached homes on the same lot, uh, but it's very, sounds very onerous to me when I read that, or, or, when I, when I read that, uh, rule. Uh, so just something to consider, um, you know, can we allow multiple types of multifamilies, detached or attached on the same lot, and how do you make that as beneficial and as streamlined as possible? Um, and I'm gonna stop there, and thank you very much.
Madam Chair, I think Kate has her hand up too as well.
Kate, yes, I see you now.
Thanks. Um, I just wanna say that, um, our associate member, Lauren Niles, is not here today, but I just wanna say that she's been working really hard on this, and as people probably know, you know, we started with this charge to talk about tiny houses, and through her work and the work of staff, um, I think we've realized how big an issue this is, and it's not really about, just about tiny homes, it really is to, to Nathan's point, um, about our approach to housing in general, I think, is, is, um, it's not too, too much to say that it encompasses many of those issues about our forward-thinking about housing, and that's why I think continuing to look at it, especially as we're working on the comprehensive plan, which really is about how we are envisioning land use for the benefit of the entire city, I think these things are gonna go hand in hand, and so, um, I know that from a perspective of the planning board continuing to work on this as a relatively long-term project, it's, this is not gonna get, you're not gonna get a report from us next week, this is gonna take a while, but it's something that I think is really key to the work that, um, the city and the planning board, um, should be doing over the next, uh, near future.
Thank you. Um, so, I guess, before I open to public hearing, what I would say is, I, I, I wholeheartedly agree that it will take some time, and, and, and I wanna make sure that the time that it does take, we do get it right in the first place. And I, I think for me, the most important piece is the intent of what hopefully we're trying to do is, and that's increase housing in a sense, right? In, in a time where housing is hard to come by, um, but like, kind of into... But like, kind of intertwining it with the former order before this one, um, with the Airbnb stuff too. It's how do we do all of this and make sure that the intention is to provide housing? There, there, there could be times where people want to benefit and turn the tiny home into an Airbnb, right? That's something that we'll have to look at and explore and see how that, 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 that works out. Not to say that I'd be against it, but ultimately, like Councillor McGrath Smith mentioned about Beltratown limiting Airbnbs, it kind of takes up space for housing, right? Because these are, these are spaces that could be someone's apartment, um, but instead they're being rented out monthly or weekly periodically. But um, with that being said, um, if there's no other comments from both the planning board and us, I would like to open up to the public.
I have a comment, but I want to hear from Mike first.
All right, so um, nobody online first before I entertain, um, anyone in person? No, okay. Name and address. Microphone's not on, Mike. You have to touch the button on.
Yeah, click the button, Mike. Yeah, not a, not a tech guy.
There you go.
Thank you. So um, thank you, I'll do that again. Uh, I'm Michael Moriarty, One Hoyoke, uh, One Lexington Avenue in Hoyoke and the Executive Director of One Hoyoke Community Development Corporation. I've had experience with tiny houses here in Hoyoke. Uh, and I think it's important to share that. Uh, also, that's caused me to be um engaged with a lot of different policy uh people uh inside and outside of the city. Uh, so I can hopefully share a little bit about those experiences as well uh because this is a large and difficult topic. Um, and there's, it, it's fraught with challenges. So what, what, what's One Hoyoke's involvement with it been? Uh, there's a program at UMass Amherst, uh, the Design, Build, Construction, or, excuse me, Design, Construct and Technology Department that has wanted to do a design-build program with students for a long time. They have to date built two tiny homes that they've gifted to One Hoyoke CDC. And when the first one arrived, and this is based on a semester, I mean, it's, the semester ends, the house is coming. And uh, I kind of have a policy that if somebody's going to offer me a free house, I'm not going to say no. I'm going to take the house and figure it out. Um, and so when we first got it, I had a dilemma because these are essentially single-room occupancy units, okay? Uh, the one that I first received is 350 square feet with room to expand it with maybe another 150-foot bedroom, so 500 square feet. Little bigger than a hotel room, smaller than a, um, a little smaller than a standard studio apartment. Uh, but one of the things to become comfortable about with them is lots of people live in single-room occupancy housing as we speak. Uh, and it is a solution for um many people, uh, especially on the lowest end of the economic ladder. So we know from the Western Mass Housing Coalition that had done a huge study that we simply need to produce new housing of all types. This is simply one of several types. So I got the house, where am I going to put it? I don't want to use up a whole buildable lot. One Hoyoke owns probably about six or seven buildable lots at different locations around the city. And it just seems like that, that there's too few buildable lots in existence in Hoyoke to use one up on such a small footprint. That, that, that seemed wrong to me simply as a store of the property that we have. So the city uh embarked on dealing with an accessory dwelling unit ordinance at the very same time I was receiving the house. Uh, I didn't engage very much with the development of that policy in large part because I'm the, our organization's the one that's actually got one on the ground. We did not want to in any way imply that this ordinance was about our house. It's really about broad policy for the city. Uh, and so that is in place, and that would allow me to place it in the downtown residential zone on the same site as another house. So the density is now something I'm comfortable with, and so I can move forward. And when they finished that second tiny house, it was a little less tiny. It was almost 650 square feet, one-bedroom unit. That's still sitting up in Amherst. So my initial plan was to bring that down to um, uh, East of White Street. I have an empty buildable lot between two other apartment structures uh that we manage, and that would allow me to turn, you know, a streetfront area that's got 14 units into 16 units, add it to our rental portfolio and provide some affordable housing uh with these new things. And, and it would look pretty neat. But the ADU process had not finished at that time. So we tried to do it with the two-family home idea. Can we, can we use a breezeway? Well, after long back and forth with the building department, it turns out, no, you can't. You, you actually have to have an adjoining wall that's fire-rated or else it's not a two-family home, uh, which I will say parenthetically, why is that necessary? You know, are, are we over-regulating potentially on that one? Um, but it took a while to find that out, and that meant there's no way I could solve that problem. It can't go with the two-family home. But now the ADU is in place, so I'm ready to go that way. You, you may be seeing very soon your first special permit to um, um, your first filing for a special permit to, to cite this. And I've already been before the planning board to sort of uh preview my, my intentions with this. But the more we studied it, I was looking for a way where it could still remain a rental property. And here's the problem, it's an owner-occupancy requirement. And I think there are good reasons why as policy that was decided upon. But what it means for us is One Hoyoke CDC is a corporate entity. It's not a person. You, I can't create an owner to live there. So we worked with the planning department, we worked with the city solicitors office, we tried to find a solution. I even joined an organization called the Massachusetts Association of Housing Cooperatives to try to see if turning into a co-op might not be a kind of solution. Turns out, the guy implored me, do not try to set, set up a two-unit co-op. You'll, you'll just have a lifetime of regret if you do that. So I'm going to listen to the guy, he's got the experience. What's happened is, and the planning board doesn't know this yet, um, I'm not comfortable selling that lot. It's a limiting feature for our future storage ship of that particular geography. But I have other locations that are in the DR zone. We're going to put it somewhere probably on Dwight Street. We're working that out this week. Like, I want this petition in front of you within a week. We're going to find the right site, make sure city leadership is in general supportive of the idea, and move forward in a place where I can sell it. And then we'll do what we do. We will find somebody to purchase the larger of the two structures, and they'll be able to rent the smaller of the two structures, and it'll be very, you know, we'll be using the accessory dwelling unit in a way that was intended. Uh, so that's coming very, very soon. It was a process. I mean, that house that we received in August of 2022 has now been sitting there for about 14, 15 months. My initial hope was it'd be there for maybe six, eight months, and that was what we originally arranged with the city. Uh, but this is very, very difficult stuff because of its newness. And you know what? I think getting the policy right at the front end is more important than getting the policy fast. So they may keep giving me houses. I can keep working with this ADU uh structure now that I know how it's set up and we can plan ahead, and we'll be fine. Uh, and people will live in these places and they'll be great. Uh, I, I, I really believe that's the case. But going forward, what happens? One thing is, I think as an organization, we can start thinking about finding a subsidized means of providing people with ADUs who are maybe struggling financially but own a home and could really benefit from that revenue. And somebody would really benefit from having this additional place to live. And we can make that work with the ADU um, uh, ordinance as it, as it currently exists. Uh, and after that's been done for a while, I would recommend you want to go back and take a look. You know, this is only in the DR zone, it's kind of a pilot at this point. After this pilot's been in existence for a while and people have settled in and we can see how it works, uh, you know, you may, you may develop a comfort level for other places in the city. Uh, but what this does not solve, and the other kind of work that people ask me about all the time, they want to see clusters of tiny homes in locations in the city. And there is really no zoning for that right now. The challenge is not that it's not impossible to subdivide and put a lot of houses on a property. We certainly have the capacity for subdivision. But the dimensional uses make tiny houses not make sense anymore. They'd have to be so separated from each other and the layouts would be so limiting. And there aren't a ton of locations that could host that. If you do it, you want to really create an opportunity to have both a decent amount of density and um, the ability uh to create a lot of tiny houses in one area. It's doable, it's happening in southwestern states in California all the time now. I would say those are the locations to go look for models. Um, but we have nothing currently possible where I could entertain getting a bunch of tiny houses and placing them all in the same place. That's, that's not an option at this point. The other thing that came up this year, Senator Olivera um approached me and asked if I would be willing to testify and study a bill having to do with um tiny houses on wheels. And there is a bill before the legislature, and there are some advocates who are strongly advocating for this sort of thing. And I'm seeing a lot of policy folks, especially municipalities, uh, even folks who came and testified against it at the legislative hearing going, whoa, wait a minute, wheels, it's a bridge too far, you're talking about RVs in people's backyards, um, you know, we're not okay with that. I would just say this, if you can, I, I'm not going to belabor this meeting with going on and on about it, but I would just say, this is a fully-built house in full compliance with the zoning. And you would have to connect it to water and sewer and um utilities just as any other house, but it would be capable of being disconnected from those services at appropriate times. One of the things suggested during that meeting, and I think I heard some suggestion of this earlier, uh, it is very likely that when the next version of the building code comes out, which may be a year and a half from now, maybe a little bit longer, uh, it may provide for some provision, or provide for some provision. It may contain some provision that would allow uh this kind of use to be um uh in existence in our building code, which it currently is not. So there are some developments, and, and the broader point about that, there are developments coming through state policy that Hoyoke should prepare itself for because the state is looking very much at trying to encourage this level of building. And I'm seeing that, uh, I, I didn't testify on Monday, but I was in the state house last Thursday, also there almost forever for the Affordable Housing Act. And um, ADUs were a big part of that, uh, as were, uh, and by extension, tiny houses. So there's a lot of state policy, I would recommend keeping a close eye on that. But the biggest thing I would say to you is uh, we do need to work with the ADUs, that we will need some language if we want to do cluster development. Uh, I think there are models of language for that use if we look beyond Massachusetts. I'm not sure there are good models within Massachusetts. Happy to entertain any additional questions you might have. Um, and I'm happy to return at another time. But I, I felt it was important that, you know, kind of this experience I've had from the last year be shared with our city government, so it might be of some use to you.
Thank you, Mike. Always a pleasure and very informa, informal, I mean informational.
Thanks.
Councillor Bartley?
Well, I just, I want to make sure nobody else wants to speak in terms of the public, right? So, are we all set?
I'm, I don't see anybody online.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you.
Right, yeah, this, you, you can see where this is morphed. Uh, not, not, we have, we have ADUs, we have tiny houses, now we have tiny houses on wheels. We don't have the, the facility, we don't have the, the land in Hoyoke. Um, thank the Lord for Article 897, so we can't take over a Crozier Field. Maybe, maybe that would be the idea of, of an advocate for a, for a tiny home on wheels, but that, that is never going to happen. The issue we have with this is similar, Mr. Chair, to the other issues. You're going to go, I, I already know this is going to go. You, you're, you're going to table it. We're going to sit here for months on end, have nothing happen, it's going to sit in that jacket, and, and meanwhile, regulations are being promulgated in Boston that may or may not change this. So I'm just suggesting to you, if we want to make our lives a little bit simpler, not have ordinance meetings go on to midnight, you need to start moving this stuff out of the jacket. This is going absolutely nowhere. I'll just finish on this way. I did speak to the uh town planner of the town of Great Barrington uh today. They did pass the tiny houses on wheels in, in Great Barrington. Now, I hope we know where Great Barrington is, uh, on, on the, on the cusp of the New York border. It's a fairly rural, it does have a nice little downtown, but it's a fairly rural area. To date, the planning director said to me they've had zero applications for tiny homes on wheels. Now, this is Great Barrington with all the room in the world to have all sorts of structures and to have little tiny house villages, however you want to describe that, it's going nowhere. This is respectfully, probably the situation in Hoyoke. Why don't, and again, I, I'm just one person, I'm, I'm going to make the motion, probably won't get seconded. Uh, why don't we just let this one go now? When they come back, whether it's Attorney Moriarty or whether it's somebody from the planning board or uh whoever is their additional member um that, that Ms. Kruckmeyer just mentioned, when they have something substantive, let the planning board deal with this because there are eyes and ears for this, this sort of, uh, well, for all things planning. Why do we have to have it bottlenecked here in Hoyoke? And I, I, you know, the argument about, well, you know, we'll have to re-advertise. You know, I, I mean, I'm, I, I don't think that should be a barrier to us tape, uh, to us uh closing a public hearing, moving this out of committee and going on with our, going on with our lives. And then when it's ready for prime time, bring it back and we'll discuss it. So hopefully that resonates, but we'll see. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Uh, I'm, uh, Councillor Vagan, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'm thinking along the lines of the previous public hearing where we have closed ours, but the planning board is keeping theirs open. And it seems like the strategy might work well for this particular order as well. But of course, I'll defer to the planning board to see what their thinking is first.
Planning board?
Thank you, and, you know, I will check in with my board. I, I see Kate's hand is up. And Kate, I assume that you're going to suggest that we continue because we have a lot of work to do on this?
Yeah, I'm going to suggest that we continue to adate relatively soon. I think my feeling um in terms of the ordinance committee, and this is my suggestion, obviously the ordinance committee can do what they choose. I, I think, you know, it, it made some sense to close short-term rentals and we'll just report to you. I think there are a lot more substantive questions about tiny houses uh because it's not just tiny houses, it's many other things. I, I think there are a number of things that we might want to come back and talk with ordinance about um in a public hearing setting. And so I, my suggestion would be that, that the ordinance committee continue this out to a date certain, somewhere four months from now, six months from now. Give us time to work, but keep your hearing open so that we can come back together and actually have a discussion about this because I think substantive questions are going to come back up in a way that I don't think um they necessarily will with short-term rentals. So that would be my suggestion.
Thank you, I really appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman?
Hold on a second, I think, Mimi, were you going to say something before I recognized Councillor Vagan?
Well, I was really just going to reinforce what Kate said. And I also, you know, our experience on the planning board is that we frequently wind up continuing things at the last minute simply because an applicant has, has materials that they don't have ready. And, you know, we find at least that having it on the agenda is no big deal. We just open and continue, you know. It isn't, it doesn't clutter up our jacket because, you know, it's just there and we don't have to take it up if we don't want to. But I do appreciate that the ordinance committee, because you operate under other rules, may have more difficulty with things clogging your agenda than we do.
Thank you.
And I see Gernander's hand up. I should just acknowledge that before I turn it back over to you.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm happy with it, Kate. I think she made a good point. Uh, if the ordinance think they can be staying open and for like, for now, three to four months, then we can come back and uh, the way we talking about tiny houses, there are a lot of questions, who's going to come up? And I just want to make that second, so I'm happy with it, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate that. And then, uh, Councillor Vagan?
So I'm all right with that. I was just getting a little bit of a sense that the way this current public hearing is, is specific to tiny houses and that there might be a broader approach needed as we go forward relative to how- broader approach needed as we go forward relative to housing. So I wasn't sure how that would all fold in or require a different public hearing, but I'm fine with it either way, whatever the committee wishes.
Thank you. Um, I think, before I recognize you, Counselor Bartley, um, the point that I would make is, as much as I hear where you're at with it, Counselor Bartley, um, and I would agree that there's not gonna be much work that can be done for now, and I don't wanna pack up the jacket, but kinda like how it was referenced, I don't necessarily have to, it doesn't necessarily have to be taken up, um, and it can stay there for a little while. So like, I would like to entertain, if it's possible, for a motion to keep it open for six months, and then if it's six months, they don't come back with nothing, then we could just do what you recommended, if it's possible. But again, I'll leave it up to the body because I am just the chair. Counselor Bartley.
The point of a public hearing is to get testimony from the public. If you're gonna get anything beyond what Attorney Moriarty said, doubtful. That was as comprehensive as it's gonna get. Beyond that, you have nobody else here. There's nothing that prohibits us from getting information from the planning board once we close a public hearing. What's the point? I mean, you know, our, obviously, we're gonna, we can't move into city council because our hands are gonna be tied relative to the planning board doing this thing, but this has been going on for more than a minute. Months and months, and it's, it's been changed, and it's, it's like an Etch A Sketch, you know? One day is one thing, now it's another thing. So, I mean, it was ADUs, and now it's tiny homes on wheels? And I'll tell ya, if, if, if you're, and just think about this, Counselor, if you're a homeowner, which I know you are, and now somebody's gonna come in and put a tiny home on, we don't even allow RVs in a driveway, okay? So that, that's not, that's not even, we don't allow truckers and to be on public streets. Now we're gonna allow a tiny home on a little tenth of an acre lot? I mean, it's, it's almost inconceivable to me that we're gonna have in this city some kind of a comprehensive plan from the, now, good luck if they wanna pull it off, but they, to date, they've cited zero land. Mike, Attorney Moriarty has been studying this stuff for at least, what he said, 17 months. He's looked around the city, there isn't a whole lot of options available. I mean, it's nice to consider the possibility, I like the possibility myself, I don't oppose it in general, but let's be practical and realistic. So whether I'm seconded, it's up to you guys, I'm gonna make, my motion is to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Mr. Chair, um, before you close, you do have one hand up on Zoom.
I withdraw my motion.
Is that Gunder's hand still up?
No, it's Mr. Grace.
Oh, I don't see her hand here. Um, all right, Kaylee, is it Kaylee? Oh, there she is, she's, now she's on. Okay, Kaylee, name and address again, I'm sorry.
Hi, Kaylee DeGrace, 99 Meadow Brook Road in Holyoke. Um, I just wanna say, this is the, I know I spoke on the other things, but this is the reason why I came here tonight. Um, so just the planning board, I go to their meetings all the time, um, but just so you guys have a little bit of background, I am a Holyoke resident, obviously, um, but I also own a pre-owned tiny house on wheels, and I've also built a pre-owned tiny house on wheels. Um, and so I, and I also, as Mr. Moriarty mentioned, Senator Olivera's bill to legalize movable tiny houses was written, in fact, by an organization that I'm a part of, um, so very familiar with all of these things. And I just wanna point out a couple of different things. So, um, the, the part that most resonated with me, uh, was what Mr. Chung said, um, that we don't necessarily need to differentiate all of these different things, maybe they're just one thing, and according to the building code, that is facts. Even tiny houses on wheels are built to the same Massachusetts building code, yet all the rest are. Um, they're just smaller, um, but they're the same thing, they're stick-built, they're framed the same way, they're built the same way, everything about them is built the same way. They are the same thing, the only difference is the foundation. Whereas in a typical home, you're gonna have a slab foundation, or a basement foundation with a tiny home on wheels, you just have a trailer foundation with wheels. The only thing is different is the chassis. Um, and the International Residential Code has also made a statement saying the same thing, that from the chassis up, it is to the building code, is the same thing. Um, and the Massachusetts Building Code, under Governor Baker, approved and wrote, um, and adopted the International Residential Building Code's Appendix Q, which provides for houses under 400 square feet. That hasn't been written yet, or it's been written, it hasn't been printed yet, that's the only difference. But it is, in fact, Massachusetts state law already. Um, it just hasn't been printed and it's not very well-known, but that's out there. Um, and as someone who owns my house, like, I would love to bring my house and put it in my backyard, I certainly have space in my backyard in Holyoke for my house, they're very small. Um, and I think they're, just because Holyoke is a city and is fairly dense, doesn't mean that there's no space for them. My house is a very large movable tiny house. I went very large for mine because I need more amenities than a lot of people, as I'm a teacher, and I work basically from the time I get up at 6:00 in the morning until the time I get home at 10:00 at night. Um, and in order to show up every day in clean clothes and, you know, showered and dishes washed and all of that, like, I need some more amenities, I couldn't downsize any more than I have. But there are many, many, many movable tiny houses that are smaller than mine, and mine is 200 square feet. Like, you could put it anywhere, and it's on the large size. Um, you could definitely put these in places, you can definitely, they can definitely seamlessly fit into a neighborhood aesthetically, they're, you know, mine is pretty really nice, actually, I'd be happy to provide pictures for any of you. Uh, both of mine are nice, um, and they make great rentals. I've rented mine, one of mine out as a long-term rental, not even a short-term rental, um, and when I was doing that, I had so, you know, I was able to drop the price and really make it affordable because it's so much smaller and less amenities. And the stories of people that came to me when I was renting it out and I had it advertised as a rental, I mean, it was heart, absolutely heartbreaking. I wanted to rent that house out to every single one of those people who were everyday folks that just were in a hard spot, and, you know, where I live, or where I work, I work in Athol, you know, the housing shortage is such a major crisis right now. We had, we went without a chemistry teacher in Athol Public Schools for three years, because as soon as we offered to hire someone, they quickly discovered that they couldn't get a house, that there were no apartments available, and any houses are purchased before they're even listed. So as soon as they found out they couldn't find a house, they withdrew their application. For three years, we went without a chemistry teacher. This year, we went out with a, without a math teacher for a year. I can't imagine that Holyoke's much different, I mean, I see their job ads come out every week. Um, and I just, like, we really need to do something, and it really is a viable solution, and it's really not that different from anything that we have. And, you know, I, like I said before about property rights, like, if I have a piece of property and I have space to put a 200-square-foot structure on wheels or not on wheels, then I think I should be able to do it. And if we wanna put zoning ordinances on how far it has to be from the neighbors, or, you know, whether we have to cover up the wheel well, or whatever, then that's fine. But I don't even wanna rent out, like, my other house, you know, the one that I built, I never wanna rent that out. I built that for me. I'm not living in it right now because I'm living with my partner, and my, you know, as various other life gets in the way, reasons why I'm not living in it, but all that's, you know, here nor there. I wanna put it in the yard. I wanna have an overpriced, oversized walk-in closet in my backyard that's on wheels if I want to, you know? And, and to say that Holyoke isn't a good place to put it.
Kaylee, hey Kaylee, time off for sports. Just, I just wanna raise a point of order if I could. Kaylee, uh, cuz you got me a little confused, this is Counselor Bartley.
So, give me, give me a second, um, give me a second.
I'm raising a point of order.
All right, uh, I understand that, but, um, I have to recognize you before you can continue with the point of order, to give you one second. Kaylee, are you done?
I'm very close to done.
Can you, can you, can you kinda surmise real quick so that I could recognize Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, I just, my final point was, no, it's okay, I understand. My final point is just that, um, you know, it's actually a lot easier to put movable tiny houses in urban areas than it is in rural areas. So the argument about Great Barrington may have something to do with that. Um, in rural areas where there's not a lot of city services, it can be cost prohibitive to install something like a septic system for a movable tiny house, which, I mean, you can't even really do that for various scientific reasons. Um, and it's much easier to install these tiny houses, whether on wheels or not, in areas where there are city services to hook up to in the first place. So it's actually, it would be a lot easier to do it in Holyoke than it would in a rural place like Royalston or Wendell where my houses were.
Thank you. I really appreciate your time, and I really appreciate you coming on to share and sharing your experiences overall. Um, Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, just through the chair to Kaylee, thank you for your time. Kaylee, do you reside at 99 Meadow Brook? Or did you reside elsewhere?
I do.
You reside there, thank you.
I live in 99 Meadow Brook where I'm sitting right now.
Yeah, that's all I need, that's all I'm asking, thank you.
Thank you. So, uh...
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion that we close the public hearing, I think that's where I am. I think that was seconded earlier.
I just second that.
Uh, on roll call, cuz we're gonna need a roll call for this. Counselor Vacan?
Yes.
Counselor Bartley?
Yes.
Counselor, Counselor McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Israel Rivera? Uh, no. So it passes 4-1 that the, um, public meeting is closed.
And I guess we just leave it on the table, right, Counselor? Okay, do I have to make a motion to affect?
Uh...
We wait for planning.
Yeah, I think we wait for...
It's automatically there, right?
Yep.
Okay, and is that the last agenda item?
Yes, but we have to wait for planning to close this stuff.
Oh, don't you...
Then we believe that it is our will to keep the hearing open, so if any member here would like to suggest a continued date and move to continue?
Um, I'll move that we continue this also to February 27th, um, at 5:30, when I think we have time to take it back up.
All right.
Madam Chair, before we, before we second and continue, um, since Mr. Moriarty's here, I just wanna make a quick comment that there is a municipality in the area that allows for multiple homes on the same lot with the subdividing, and it's Northampton. I think he's probably aware of that, but I just wanna make that as a public record. Thank you very much, and I second the motion.
Okay, thank you. All in favor? Sharon, I think you're muted. Sorry about that, by roll call vote, Gernander?
Yes.
Rosanna?
Yes, ma'am.
Nathan?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Memmy? Yes. Okay, thank you all very much, and the planning board members, I will see you back in our meeting.
Thank you all.
That, that's, that's all we have.
That's hardcore. Uh, motion to adjourn.
Uh, your second? All in favor?
All right.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Good night.
Record break.